Want me to say something? Does it help?
Meeting is in order. I understand that we have one of the commissioners who is not present with us and has some task keeping to do in advance to pull her in. Director, can you please, can you please help us?
Absolutely. Commissioner Vattra?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Were you able to proceeding, hear the proceedings up, up on this end up to this, up until now?
No.
Okay, can you hear me, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Okay. Do you have a copy of the agenda for this meeting?
Yes, I do.
Have you posted the agenda at the location where you are?
Yes.
Is your location reasonably accessible to the public such as, such that any member of the public could participate in this teleconference from your location if he or she wished to?
Yes.
Is there any of the, is there any member of the public there with you?
No.
Okay, and so I would, I would, I would now like to ask that any member of the council speak up at this time if, if such member has not been able to clearly hear council member, I'm sorry, Commissioner Vattra. So have, has, have all of the commissioners been able to hear?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. And okay, so, so hearing, hearing, hearing all the yeses, the record will reflect that you can, that you're able to hear Commissioner Vattra. Now, and now the, the commission needs to vote as to whether to allow the remote attendance by Commissioner Vattra. So it's a roll call vote. Chair Targ?
Yes.
Chair, Vice Chair Brothers?
Yes.
And Chair Morris, I'm sorry, Member Morse. Great. Therefore, the, that, that vote passes, so Karen, you can attend virtually. I'm sorry, Commissioner Vattra, you can attend virtually.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much for taking this.
Sure.
Piece of business. We could then proceed with a
Well, yes. Chair Targ?
Present.
Commissioner Vattra?
Here.
Vice Chair Brothers?
Present.
Member Morse?
Present.
Member Krasinski is absent. If you have four, four members in quorum.
Excellent. At this point, we have nobody here with us in the old schoolhouse where we're situated. May I ask if there are members of the public who are, let's say, virtually, who would like to be on here and deferred on non-agendized matters?
Uh, no, thank you.
Phone number ending in seven, five, six, two, you're allowed to speak.
Good evening, can you hear me?
That's fine, thank you.
Great. So yes, we see there's an agenda, but there's nothing below the agenda. So I'm a little confused. I'm very appreciative of Commissioner's Brothers' memo, which was from September twenty-four, and I assume that's the agenda, but otherwise, there's nothing listed under the agenda. So please clarify. Thank you.
Interesting, the question is whether the agenda is a non-agendized matter. We will clarify that in just a moment. I understand the point of confusion and will respond to that shortly.
No other hands are raised at this time.
Thank you very much. We should address the question and then introduce the matter.
Let's, yes, there's no business before the commission tonight except for the colleagues' memorandum from Vice Chair Brothers. So that is the, that is the items before the, the commission tonight.
Will, will we also address any staff reports and the like?
Yes, I, I do have a brief staff report when you're, when we get to that point.
Fair enough. So the item that we have, and thank you so much for agendizing this and pulling this colleagues' memorandum letter to attention that Chair?
Chair?
Vice Chair. Brothers has pulled together, addresses issues pertaining to efficacy and efficiency of this body and ways of reducing confusion. And it calls ultimately for the establishment of a ad hoc committee to address the matters identified. The way that I would propose that we move forward is that Vice Chair Brothers take us through the letter, introduce the need for the for the letter, identify that there are comments that have been provided by one of our commissioners who's not present with us, and take special note of that, to then, then ask questions, open up the matter for public comment. I don't believe this would be a hearing. And, and then take it back and decide how to move forward with the proposal, the action item upgrading a ad hoc meeting.
Yes, this, this is not a public hearing, but it would be appropriate to hear public comment at this time if the chair wishes. Do we have any members of the public wishing, with their hands raised?
Why would you do that for an item that's not agendized?
I would, I would propose that we have Vice Chair Brothers take us through the your colleagues' document, then ask questions of her, and then open it up for
Of course, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your, your question.
I appreciate it, thank you.
With that further ado, as you can see, I wrote this in September, and at that point last year, we had had very few meetings, and we had reached the point where we had members of the public actually coming to our meetings to ask the status of things like building permits and other actions that were, were getting lost somewhere in the department. And it was before you were here, Terrence, I will hasten to add. And so it started to raise a lot of questions about what our, our duty and our responsibilities are. So I kind of say that as background with the passage of time, I, I think some of those inquiries have changed, but I still think there's a lot of questions amongst the public exactly what our role is. Secondly, when I applied for this position a couple of years ago, they told me to submit an application that told me how I could accomplish the, the duties and chores associated with being a commission, and I looked through everything I could find in the codes and in the handbooks and so forth, and there really, our duties were not laid out anywhere. So thirdly, I also at that time looked at the, the explanation on the town's website, which is very general, but also very specific. It talks about us as operating as a, of a, of the board of, of, of adjustment. So I, I just found even from the start that there were a lot of questions about what our role properly should be or could be. I'm not proposing in this memo to solve any of those problems. I'm sort of with this dilemma here to sort of lay out some of the background as to why I took the time to do this without necessarily saying that I have the answers, because I think my proposal is very specific to put together a subcommittee to think about some of these things. I was thinking, driving over here when I was in college, there used to be this sort of yoga expression that the unexamined life wasn't worth living, and I, I guess I feel like a lot of this stuff in here, a lot of the points that I've, that I've raised are things that I think are worth examining. For example, the housing element was clearly something that we had to take actions on, and then I guess it went to the council, and I, I've never seen it appear again before us, other than maybe once in a update from, from, from the planning director. So it's, the way I like to operate in my life is I, I like if something's going to come back to me, I like to kind of keep track of it in the intervening, intervening times. So there's this question of what, what information we might get even separate and apart from what actions we might take. Again, I'm not posing anything here, but I'm proposing that I think these are important issues for us to look at. At the time I wrote this, John Golden was still on the, he was the, he was the, the chair of the commission, and he was actually the one who asked me to put this together. I did work with him at the time, and we, we hammered out some of these questions together, although truly it is, it is my document. He did, he and I then did discuss this document he found called the Planning Commissioner's Role, and, you know, there's, the proposal that I'm setting forth to set up a committee is not to reinvent the wheel, it's just probably to do a better job of elucidating and elaborating on what it is that we, we really, really try to do. So, so that's really the background. I tried to put more information in here. I looked online at procedures and policies. I guess that was, we had a discussion in August, I'm sorry, I jumped around a little bit there, when John was chairing a meeting about what our procedures and policies were on various issues. It just comes up time and time again. Do we respond to public comment or not? You know, we're legally not required to, is it legally put us in jeopardy if we do? Kinds of questions like that, and then questions related to officers and so forth. And so at that time, I looked around, and even our neighboring similarly small town of Woodside has a two-page document. It just sort of says, you know, if you're a commissioner, you're supposed to prepare, you're supposed to come, and you're supposed to be, have a fiduciary duty to the town. And I just felt like it was worth examining, and hence having this subcommittee to examine the extent to which we want to do this, the extent to which we want to, I guess, write down and maybe address or discuss some of these issues around, around the edges of what we, we do and how we, how we operate. The jurisdiction that Ronnie referenced in his very helpful message lays out our jurisdiction, but again, it doesn't necessarily direct the, the reality. Having jurisdiction doesn't mean anything the way we operate now, because we operate now at the sort of behest of the planning director. Is that the way we always want to be? Or do we want to have an avenue for independently raising questions? For example, all of last year when we didn't have a planning director, and therefore we didn't meet. So it's those kinds of questions that I tried to lay out when I went through this last year. They are questions that Palo Alto, again, in a very short couple-page memo, I mean, I'm not talking about rewriting, you know, the dictionary. Woodside and even Middle Park all have a little bit more than we do. I know that when I joined another point of the commission, I didn't even, hadn't been advised at all about the state fair practices issues, so that caught me a little bit by surprise. And then this year, the town, last year, 2024, the town again with all the turnover, I was one of many people, and I know some people in the council had the same experience where we were subject to penalties for failure to, to provide information that I always thought the town was providing. So a lot of little things like that, that I think could be put together. I think next point, we've got these new, new commissioners, and I think, I don't know they feel, but I, I know when I was new to it, even though I had appeared before probably fifty planning commissions in my career, I still didn't really know how this commission was going to work. The final point I would make that I think we need to think about is that I look at things as a lawyer, I appeared before planning commissioners for huge, as most of you know, I had a large SEQA and to some extent even more national NEPA project practice, and we'd always have, almost always had to go to the planning commission before we could get any local approvals. And in my instance, not because we necessarily brought suit, but because people sued us to stop our developments, the jurisdiction of the planning commission is really important. In the town of Portola Valley handbook, they have a little two or three paragraphs on the planning commission, and then they sort of say commission and committees everywhere else. And I think this is a really important point to me as a lawyer, and especially if we were to get something like a builder's remedy. I mean, our decisions are part of the administrative record on the matters upon which we act. So if any of those matters ever go to litigation or, you know, God forbid, whatever other sort of draconian systems that come up, our, our record's part of that, and that's why it's important that we have agendas and agendized items. The committees, that's not the case. The very way the town of Portola Valley set up the committees is that they report directly to the council. So to the extent their input would be part of something that might be part of a complicated factor, it would be through that challenge to the council. And I think that this is an important distinction that, that, that needs to be focused on a little bit as we get into these sort of more complicated times. So those are the kind of thoughts that went through my mind, and rather than discuss all of them before the committee, John and I last, last fall, last late summer, decided that putting together a subcommittee to kind of maybe put, put issues into categories and then see which categories people thought might be useful and, and worth pursuing a little bit. So simply put, this letter just asks to develop a subcommittee to look at these kind of questions related to our role, also to our, our operation and our functioning. And that's probably pretty much the, the bottom line. I guess our role as a commit, commission, our operation and functioning, our role as individual commissioners, and pull that together in, in some coherent fashion. And I will say, I have no, in closing, I will say I have no agenda here. I just am very used to operating in a more structured environment. For example, this meeting tonight, I've been out of town on things that are on my calendar for, for quite a while. Friday morning until last night, which meant that I didn't actually see for sure that we had a meeting until I got the agenda Saturday morning. And fortunately, we didn't have a five-hundred-page agenda that I would have had to look at, you know, between travels and at airports. And so I, I think, to me, I like knowing, you know, that two comes after one and three comes after two, and, and I think that's what this is about. Thank you. I'm happy, happy to answer any questions for sure, and I'm delighted to have some input.
You're on mute, and so am I. Commissioner Vattra, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
So I'm wondering if you, at this point, were asking questions, clarifications of Vice Chair Brothers?
Yes, I just had a couple of, of thoughts about this, and it's not, it's related, but not exactly the same thing that you're looking at. I think it was last year, council members Hupdi and Taylor did come up with an ethics policy for, I believe, the town council and the committee, so I think that there may be some work that's already been done there. And then also, I know Patty Dews and Ed Holland are working on updating the committee manual, and maybe that could be done, you know, perhaps with the subcommittee could assist with that. And no, it's not exactly the same thing, but there was some talk in there, and I was wondering if you had, were aware of those? I guess that's my question.
Those are both good points, and I haven't pursued either of those at this point, but I think they're exactly the kinds of things that it makes sense to look at. The, the other thing I will say, and I, I just didn't have time, because like I said, I was out of town, the ASCC themselves actually put together some sort of a document along the lines of what I'm talking about, and I noticed at one point, the town of Palo Alto, their planning commission actually has an annual sort of plan. Obviously, things change, but they, the ASCC did the same sort of thing. They, they put something together that I saw about three months ago on sort of their annual plan. So it sounds like a lot of people are thinking about, about these, these evaluations, I guess, for lack of a better word. So I think those are both great comments, and I'd be happy to follow up on both of those if I'm on the, if I'm so lucky as to be on the committee that I'm suggesting.
Yes, indeed. Thank you.
I don't have any questions. I have when we get to the comment section, I guess, if, or unless we're just discussing openly.
If you can state your comments in the form of a question, then you should feel free to proceed now.
I don't think I can.
Fair enough. Then let's take it to the staff. The questions that I have are, one, what are the nature of the products that you would see coming out of this body?
Good question. I, I thought, I for one, thought that we could do a better job of the description that we put on the town's webpage. It's hard to find the, the description of our role that's buried in the government part of our municipal code, which Ronnie has pointed out to us. Again, that's something I very specifically compared to other towns, and I think other towns do a good, better job. So I think something like that would probably be something that would come of it. I'm open as to what the subcommittee might want to bring back to the commission as a whole, but I guess having looked at a number of other towns, I could see a maybe one-page document that sort of says that these are sort of our operating procedures and policies, that tends to be the word that's used in other jurisdictions, and that would address perhaps some of these issues. I, I, I think I want to prejudge the outcome, but I can't imagine anything much greater than that. Whether it's a three-page document or a two-page document, that I don't really know and exactly what it includes. I don't, I don't want to conjecture at this time. Does that answer your question?
I think so. So I put up a notice on the PV forum earlier today, so I was getting email correspondence asking about the Woodside firing, and it characterized this, that we were going to be considering an approach for bylaws. I think that that was a misstatement based on, on what I'm hearing now, and it may be that's a more formal and different kind of document that you have in mind. And if so, let me apologize and you can.
No, absolutely. I mean, personally, I would like to see it be bylaws, but I think both John's comments before he left and Ronnie's comments, although, you know, it's so hard to take the spirit of comments from the exact words, were to go on the lesser side, rather than what I might say the bylaws might be a greater side. I think you've got to walk before you run, and I think even if we have a policy and procedures documented, that, that would, that would be a step in the right direction from my perspective. So no apologies needed.
We're, we're always trying to do our best.
Yeah.
I think that that is that's what I have. I'm going to, if it's okay, ask staff if you have any questions, as this may have implications for you.
Oh, I don't have any questions at this point, and I'd be interested in the outcome of the subcommittee, if it's a real one.
I, I would certainly be interested in, in your participation and advice perhaps to the subcommittee as the subcommittee is moving forward.
Totally. I totally agree with that. We didn't have any staff when I wrote this.
So with that, why don't we open this up for any public comment? Again, this isn't a hearing, but if you have thoughts, suggestions, approaches, value in this subcommittee exploration as described by Vice Chair Brothers? Please, please signify that it's being heard.
Phone number ending in three, zero, five, six, you're allowed to speak.
Can you hear me? It's Dana.
Hey, Dan.
Hi.
Hi, you guys. I mean, I'm just in it, listening, and I want you guys, as you move forward, to be creative, because Portola Valley is utterly different than any other town. Los Altos, Woodside, anywhere you go, and that's because of our government, and that's because of the decisions of the planning commission and ASCC. That's why we look different, that's why we are challenging, you know, but I want us to stick with it, and I want you guys to stick with it and be creative and do your own thing. Thank you.
Phone number ending in seven, five, six, two, you're allowed to speak. Phone number ending in 7562. You're allowed to speak.
Caroline Grotton, very, thank you very much. Can you hear me?
We can hear you loud and clear.
Yes.
Great. So I concur with Dana. And I concur with Vice Chair Linda Brothers. We need clarifications. So when we join these committees, we have a handbook, and so we go by the handbook. Besides the handbook, we have the general plan. So people who serve on these committees understand the values and the core values and, and actually the pursuit of what we are trying to achieve. But I understand when new people are new to this town, it might be confusing. Unfortunately, in the last, I would say, six years, perhaps 10, we had a town council who relied on, on, on staff. But it, they were never educated on our general plan, and they never understood why this is such a special place. And that's why I concur with Dana. We're, we're not like Menlo Park. We're not like Los Altos. We're very different. And people who have been here and who have gone a true, well, 30 years or something or more to build this community, we appreciate the values. And we would like to carry this on to staff, but also to you guys. And I'm kind of surprised that you raised the question, because when I look at the handbook and I look at the general plan, for me, it's clear, but obviously, it's not clear. And especially when John Golden is, is presenting this of the leaks of cities, then I really am concerned. Because that's not what we're pursuing. We have a very unique town, and we have the rules and regulations. So all the committees were just advisory, except for you guys. You and ASCC, you guys are the decisive bodies, together with town council. And I really appreciate that you're bringing this up. It would be great to have clarifications. And I hope you saw my comments, because in the last few years, we have been relying on consultants. And I think they missed the boat, they missed the data. And one of your duties is to look at corrections and to make sure that we can correct the, the facts. And I hope you will do that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rita Combs, you're allowed to speak.
Hi, Rita Combs. Thank you so much for taking my comment. Linda, thank you so much. Commissioner Linda Brothers, thank you so much for writing this up. I'm one of those people that have been writing letters and speaking in, in different meetings, saying that, hey, there's only been seven planning meetings this year and only about two topics, when, of course, there's building, you know, there's trucks coming up and down west. Day long, so things are happening, but it wasn't being planned in the planning meetings. And of course, with housing element, everything was, it seemed to have been focused only on trying to get that passed. And a lot of other things just weren't happening, and meetings were being canceled at the last minute. So in reading through your, and, you know, and, and what you said at the beginning, explaining, doing that, I'm in total agreement. Yeah, things are just a little bit better, but we have a contractor, you know, Terrence is doing a great job, no offense. But we have a contractor planning person, and we did have that other planning person that was here from Southern California for a quick minute. So we, we need to get things in place. We have too many contractors. We have a lot of things that aren't being done, and yes, they're getting a little bit better than what they were. And I really appreciate Chairman and Targ, you meetings, but we need to do better. So while we're going through this document, let's think about what we need to do better. And the handbook is good, but the handbook, anytime you question things in the handbook, it's always being rewritten. So what is real and what's not real? And yeah, there's things in place, but we're a town that, a wonderful, exciting town. But we need to get things done so that we have a basis to stand on and move forward. And things seem to be constantly up in the air, and promises are being made, and staff is changing, and contractors are changing. So let's get this tightened up, and I really appreciate your memo. Thank you.
Betsy, I'm, you're allowed to speak.
Yes, thank you so much. And, and thank you, Linda and committee, I think, and commissioners, excuse me. I, I, I really appreciate any time that we can spend and that you have already spent and have launched. Investing in our values, investing in our culture, especially right now as a planning commission, you're pulling together again with a new and slightly different identity with two new members, inevitably so. I think, are you there? Whoops. Sorry, I think I swept you away, but you're there. I think it's an ideal time. And will help bring some cohesion to, to the five of you. So I think it's great. I think it's wonderful that you're leading the way with the town council. Not yet having taken up the ethics, the ethics mantle that they intended to one or two years ago. Please do lead the way. Why not? And I did catch one thing that, in John Golden's letter, that I just want to call out as a question, which is your ability to act independently. I see you as an independent body. You make most of your decisions independent of the town council. Of course, the town council, occasionally, things will go to the town council because it is so deemed by the planning department, or because they want to rethink something that you've decided. I still think that, you know, I don't know, ballpark any 5% of the time, you're acting independently. And so perhaps you'll unpack what that means later. In any case, more power to you, and thank you for taking this on in a thoughtful, deliberative manner.
David Cardinal, you're allowed to speak.
Thanks. I, I mostly wanted to echo something that Ronnie said in one of his comments, which is that I, like him, would love to see the planning commission have some kind of role in real, long-term planning, because we don't really do any of that. Now, I totally agree that, that's not in the way the current charter is set out, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And the town council would have to decide that that was a good idea. But I think we, as a town, deserve to have somebody looking at our long-term plan. And I don't know of a group that's better suited for it than the planning commission. So that would be my, my hope for the future. Thank you.
Apparently, there are no hands raised.
If anyone's talking, I can't hear you.
No. How about you? Why don't we start with you?
Could I actually thank the members of the public? I think your comments were extremely well-taken and useful. And, and I think I particularly agree with what you were able to say that I couldn't capture on the four corners of this paper, which is a huge amount of the intention here is to, to maintain our uniqueness and, and maintain our, our, our sort of independent, different approach. And not, I use the others as examples, just to show that we were sort of underpapered, if you will. But I don't want to say anything more than that. But those comments were extremely helpful to me. Thank you.
Was that directed towards me? It's hard for me to hear you, Nicholas.
Commissioner Avatra, would you like to kick this off?
Yeah, I kind of think of this as sort of a bifurcated thing. There is some regular routine things that would be really nice to clear up and to be consistent where, where we can with town council and with the committees, and then have our own where it's appropriate. And it's, there's been efforts in those areas recently, and I think that that would be a great thing to do. But I'm a little wary in the short term, like in the next year or two, to be doing half of this, which is taking, making our own plan or doing any long-term planning, just because of, until the staff stabilizes and we have our finances in order, and we have our housing element certified, and it sounds like the safety element's coming up. I think we have a lot on the plate for the, you know, the next year or so, until things kind of settle out. I, I'm struggling with how we're going to be able to plan things, or, you know, how are we going to be able to even think about long-term? So I, I'm not against doing that, but I'm just thinking the timing, like, maybe we should try to attack the first half, the, kind of the more basic things now, and then the harder things, maybe in a year or two. That's kind of where I'm at. Thanks.
I guess my thoughts on it are really helpful timing for me as a new commissioner and new person to town government. In that I'm trying to figure out what the process is. And it has not been easy. And actually getting Ronnie's comments, where I was able to dive in to see what is the handbook. I had not seen that before. There is really no orientation from the staff or, you know, other members of the committee that I think would be very helpful for new members, so that, you know, you have a welcome email. You know, this may be too granular, but there's a welcome email, and here's where you can find out your job description. And here, here are the people that you'll be interacting with, which then I think goes along with Commissioner Brothers of, you know, what are those roles and responsibilities? But I, I don't think I can comment on beyond that, that it would be as a new commissioner to have a handbook, if you will, or it could be just a couple pages of, this is where you get your initial answers, and then come back with good questions, not basic questions. And I guess extending that to the public in some form or fashion, I could see would be helpful.
So my general view, thank you. My general view is that there are probably a small handful of documents that would be useful. And one of these is a public-facing document, in a certain sense, or all public-facing documents, explaining what the planning commission is in its probably four different roles that I can think of right now. What the form of agenda is, what to expect, for example, if you come to a planning commission meeting, and ways in which you can participate effectively. There is a three-minute, generally, timeframe. You can and is frequently useful to have written materials submitted in advance. It's fine to speak in general to planning commissioners prior to meetings. You should anticipate that the planning commissioner will identify that they spoke with you in advance for transparency. And I think that that would be a useful, public-facing document. I think there could be some updating, and I love the notion that there's presently a revision to the handbook that we may be able to add to or make suggestions to. And also to help publicize, I was not aware of the handbook, for example, it's been around for a while. I'm leery of bylaws and of making this body really more sort of more rigid in its, in its, in its format. I think one of the things that has worked well for us is that it is flexible. There's probably conversations about setting agendas that is worth having both with staff and also with members of council. But I don't feel that we're in a position to write terms for that ourselves. That's a conversation that I think we should participate in, but I think it's also above our pay grade at some level. I think probably different members of the planning commission feel differently about what their role is and what their relationship is to council. There are some things in which I think we have flex and independence. There are other items that we really don't, that we take our direction from and serve at the measure of. And it's probably worth having that conversation, perhaps having it publicly. I don't know that we need to go and reduce it to writing at this point in time. So my suggestion would be that a ad hoc committee would be useful. A starting point would be to identify the nature or what the form of the products are that it is producing. The admonition would be to be modest, at least as an initial matter, and not be bold. But perhaps have bold conversations and see where that may lead us. But initially, start off with some success and some some products that would benefit residents as much as it would benefit us. And then take it, evaluate where we are. And to that end, my suggestion would be that we give ourselves perhaps a quarter, three months. And then evaluate what the products are that we have, how things are going. And then the need for a ongoing ad hoc committee. And then, at that point, we can sharpen ourselves up a little bit, or understand that we've done what we need to do, or we need to do something different, or need to do something in addition. So that is definitely not in the form of emotion. But that is, that's what I'm thinking about. And Vice Chair, our brothers, thank you very much for putting this together. It's something that you've been thinking about, and we've been talking about for some time. So I appreciate your, your, your keying this up for us.
Thank you. I, I think all of these comments are extremely helpful. It's one of those things that, how do they say? How do you? Yeah. Eat a, eat a marshmallow or something, one bite at a time, or how you eat an Eat a, eat a marshmallow or something, one bite at a time, or how you eat an elephant or something. And a lot of you have said things that I've had in my mind that I hadn't particularly said very well, but I I think that it's pretty clear from a lot of what's been said that there are some pretty obvious sort of initial activities that that would be very useful, I think, like Doug's comment about a letter with appropriate cross references to our actually existing jurisdiction, so on and so forth, right now. That would be useful for new members, but it'd also be very useful for members of the public to have some insight onto that. I I did in here towards the end say that one of the jobs of the subcommittee would be to figure out how to implement whatever they came up with. And clearly what I had in mind was talking to staff, talking to the council, either officially or unofficially. Remember, there's what? Two members of the council who were on the planning commission and one who was on the AFCC. So I think all of those comments are well within what I had in mind and probably stated more clearly than I stated them. So the only thing I'm a little concerned about was the very last comment you made. I guess I'm asking us to put a subcommittee together right now to get the ball rolling and maybe they just come up with a global plan and then we come back to the commission and then they start to implement or something like that. Or or maybe they actually implement a few simple things, but you made a comment and then about an ad hoc committee. Was that different? Three or four, you said three or four months and then an ad hoc committee? I don't know what you're talking about there. Okay, okay.
I'm proposing that there's an ad hoc committee that would be formed. It would have a shelf life, it would have an expiration date of three months hence. That it would the first task that it would have would be to identify the product that it is going to produce. Come back within a very short period to update the commission, take input. And then come back to commission with a product and draft for us to discuss. And then move forward and that may be three months right there. And then we can evaluate where we are. And what are the useful items? The ad hoc committee. What are the functions or or documents it could produce?
Okay, sounds good. You need a motion. I can't make a motion. It's my, it's my memorandum.
So I I so I think that that's actually closer to to a motion. I'm not sure that we're there yet, but I'm wondering. Karen, if you have any views based on the better gelled description that I just provided, or if you have a different way of couching it or a different idea of what an ad hoc committee might look like.
I guess I'm pretty open on how that would work or the timeframe. I don't think there's any real rush. And I was going to suggest Commissioner Morse, because I think having somebody who is less familiar to be fresh eyes might be really useful. For the rest of us who have kind of been around for a while, it's hard to sometimes not see the things that are that you know too well. But that was just a nice suggestion.
Thank you. Doug, so if we have an ad hoc committee, I believe that you may have been just drafted into the motion. So having noted that, what would you like to see on this ad hoc committee?
I guess from, you know, again, a new member perspective. In terms of who should be on the committee? Is that your question? Or is it what the scope of it should be?
I I think I think that we know who should be on it, but what the scope would be.
I guess I go back to the comment of I I don't know the policy procedures of you know, the committee well enough to get into the specifics, but I like the idea of walking before running. And to be do it in stages, because I think that you could have small wins deliverables as you go along. Rather than blowing this up and you know, maybe going down the road of where Commissioner Ronnie was concerned about, you know, re re-engineering things that are already out there. I think that's the danger of the committee.
Vice Chair Brothers, I'm in danger of making a motion. So before I do so, do you have any, any further thoughts?
I was thinking as I listened, that we're all pretty comfortable with a ad hoc committee that looks at procedural aspects of the commission. And procedural aspects might include memberships, duties, introduction and training. Perhaps guidelines to public comment. And perhaps some information about how we run our meetings. And then that some of those items would be evaluated and brought back to the commission. I don't know if three months is the magic number or not, but I think that's very workable. Probably you'd hear from us more quickly. And then I think a part of that that's probably not in the motion is Karen's Commissioner Vatra's comment at the outset about not getting into the substantive things. You and I think of things as lawyers procedural and substance, and substance would be when are we actually going to get to the safety element? But I think the procedural I hear I heard uniform support for. And we will have the minutes to guide us.
So I'd like to make a motion that we form a time limited ad hoc committee to inform the public and the commission itself of the duties and role and scope of the Portola Valley planning commission. Ways in which the public can effectively engage to further modify and offer support to the existing committee or group that is updating the Portola Valley handbook? Is that, is that the?
Yeah, I think that's the name.
It's set or a word substantially similar there too.
Reach out, reach out to other activities.
And to identify key procedures that as we may wish to adhere to as a matter of policy.
Sounds good to me.
And to report at least monthly. And as needed to this body. Full stop. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Take a vote. I don't believe this needs to be a roll call vote. Since you have a member that's remote, you do need to make all your votes.
Where, where, where's the procedure for?
It's in state law. The Chair Tard.
Yes.
Vice Chair Brothers.
Yes.
And Commissioners Vatra.
Yes.
And Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
You have four zero one absent.
Can I suggest that we now need to populate this ad hoc committee that for which we do not have a name? And can I suggest that Vice Chair Brothers and Commissioner Morse serve in that capacity?
Be honored.
I'd be happy to.
We appreciate that. Karen, can you can you weigh in?
Oh, that's wonderful. I think that's a good combination.
Excellent. Let it be so. And following that, we will become more creative and I'll expect an interpretive dance to our process. Thank you very much. This is helpful. I'm looking forward to seeing the excellent work that you guys do.
I think it'll be fun.
I moving forward, we have do we have a staff report?
Mr. Chair, it may be out of order, but I have another commissioner report. It's just one sentence. Am I out of order?
The virtue that we have is that we have flexibility. And let it be so always. So, yes.
Karen Vatra and I were, were made a subcommittee to deal with the, the policy that we are allowed to create as a planning commission for the undergrounding of power lines. And we have a draft of that. And we are ready to meet with the town staff at hopefully next week at a time to be determined by you guys. And that's my report.
Oh, just to clarify, not next week.
Oh, okay. I got that wrong. First weekend, March?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
So can I suggest that you share the draft with staff and also with the mayor? As well, who may wish to share it also.
Yeah, I already said I'd talk to the mayor. It's a, it's a, it's an initial draft at this point, but by the time we meet, it will be a viewable draft.
That sounds great. Needless to say, I'd like to make sure that there's foray for policymaking outside that we have our council with us.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you very much.
I'm done.
Back.
We're, we're back to
back to staff reports. Yes, I I do have a few staff reports to provide, a few, a few little updates. First of all, not in order of chronology, but of importance. We, we are looking at March 19th to review the zoning changes that will bring the that will hopefully bring the, the housing element back in conformance and be recertified and allow the recertification. So we will be will be bringing it forward on the March 19th meeting. There is a new state law that came and went into effect in January that requires 20-day notice for any rezoning change that affects a parcel. Therefore, therefore that slows our process somewhat beyond what I was expecting, but we are we are aiming to bring it forward to the, to the to the planning commission on the, on the 19th of March. In addition, the Priory Project is going to be coming back to the commission. It's, of course, the, the meeting was continued to, to to a date that, that was not feasible for staff to accommodate. We, we will be bringing that to the commission on the 5th of, the 5th of March. So that'll be happening. And those, I believe those notices went out today, so that'll, that'll be that you'll be, you'll be given a staff report. We, we, as you might have noticed, we're aiming at the request of the commissions. We're aiming to give, to give a little, at least a little more notice to the, to the staff reports prior to, instead of just the minimum 72 hours for allowed by state law, which we're, we're really aiming for a full week ahead. And that, that, those are the, those are the key items, those are the key pieces that we have going forward. In addition, I wanted to mention that we are working hard on the minutes. The, when I say we, I mean Emily. And she, she's, she's working on it and she's, and she's working on procedures to make it more, to more streamlined. But she, she actually has a, a couple, a couple of those wayward minutes that, that are in a draft stage, so you will, you'll be seeing them soon. And so that we haven't forgotten them. We're just, we're trying to figure out the best process to do it. There, we have, we have limited staff and, and a lot of ongoing work that we have to keep moving. So I apologize for the lateness of the minutes. But, but just to rest assured, they're not forgotten, we'll, but we'll be bringing them to your attention. That, that's all I have.
Okay, I appreciate both. Appreciate the staff report, the work on the minutes. And especially the additional time that we'll have to review both of these important matters that will be coming to us that have been of substantial interest public. The additional question that I would have is is there a staff report or a status on alternative housing sites? I do not have the name of the committee properly stated. But the committee that is identifying potential additional or alternate sites.
The, the committee is meeting tomorrow night. They're off their regular schedule, so they're, they'll be meeting tomorrow night and they'll have a better idea of their, of the, the, for, the the process going forward. There is, there is a discussion about coming to, going to the town council to get direction. Town council needs to act for, for staff to be engaged on the, on the effort. And there is talk of that and, and sort of agenda planning, but there's no, nothing agendized. I expect after the meeting tomorrow night that that'll come more into focus.
Terrific. I can only also add that I flag the value that training might have for both only our new members, but for all of us as a way of refreshing ourselves and getting to know each other better. I've called that out to planning director.
Interested.
We, are there questions of staff from the commission? Very none. Let's open it as we have been to the public. Are there any questions as to commissioner reports or staff reports?
There are no hands raised.
I believe with that, we should close that. I believe also that we have one additional item that needs to be raised before we adjourn. And that, and that matter is?
There is one call. There is one person who put up the hand.
Well, that, that is, that is excellent. We look forward to hearing from that one person.
No number ending in seven, five, six, two, Yolavski.
I apologize that there's a lot of confusion at the end, so I really appreciate the subcommittee, Morse and Brothers. I'm not sure how they will get public comments. I would like to be engaged in this. So residents have been longtime members of this community for over 30 years. We really understand the general plan. We understand the handbook, myself. Myself, I'm, my husband and I, we have been participating in subcommittees. And I'm currently in the BPTS. I was very surprised to hear today that my chair, Mr. Holland, has been asked to renegotiate the handbook and I have several concerns about that. Because BPTS has not been performing as it's supposed to be according to our handbook. So I would like to engage Karen Vatra to reach out to me and so we can discuss this. Because there's some difficulties. Thank you again for advice, Commissioner Brothers, to initiate this. Conversation is needed and we need dialogue. Mr. Tard, you have been a long time volunteer in this community and we appreciate your time too. But you seem to be on the other side of Portola Valley. And what is special about Portola Valley is we have all these commissions and committees because we want to have the perspectives of all residents within this community. And so hopefully we can have a more collaborative effort. You leave me with many questions at this time. And I could not raise the most important question at this time because there's so many issues at the end of the meeting. But let's open this conversation and reach out to me. You have my phone number, you have my email, and we need to do better. So thank you very much.
There are no other hands raised.
Well, we appreciate all of the comments that we have received. With nothing further on the agenda, unless there are additional items set to be raised, I would move that we adjourn. So I adjourn the meeting.